Oh yeah, I know that. Lenovo cameras checked. Video settings. Don't seem to make any difference.
Oh Jen, you're on now. I see you. There you are. Hi.
Thank you. Hi.
There's just Zona. I don't see ya.
All right, I had to try something completely different. And try to get on here using Internet Explorer. So look for me again in a minute.
Okay. Andrew, could you let us know when we go live, please?
Yes. You'll go live in just a few moments.
Okay, I'm just, if you can give us just a few more minutes just till Steve gets on, that way we've got four of us here, if possible.
Okay.
Thank you. I see us. Well, there's six people watching us.
Yes, I advertised the meeting in my CPS weekly update.
Oh, good.
So let's see if a few more people join us.
Yeah. Let's break some numbers. Hi Beth.
Hello.
Hey, Michelle.
Well, I'm here again by voice, and I believe that makes it legal.
Yeah, it does.
I have no idea what's going on with this video business.
Okay. All right, Steve, thank you for trying. Many times. Okay, we're ready when you are, Andrew.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the school committee meeting of July 7th, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
Move to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
And here I am, and I found the problem.
Thank you. And may I have a second?
Second, Jen Eller.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor?
You have to do a roll call.
I can't hear you, Tim. You're muted.
You have to do a roll call.
I understand that, Steve. I'm thinking for Tim to give me a verbal. Thank you. Okay, just give me a thumbs up. Okay, thank you, Tim. Jen, Ella?
Aye.
Steve Sodovic?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and I think Zona Butler is not currently on. Thank you. Okay. This is Pauline Proch, Chair of the Nantucket School Committee. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jen Eller, Vice Chair.
Aye.
Zona Butler. Noted, not here at the moment. Tim Lepri. Tim Lepri, sorry. We're gonna have to get you to be able to turn your sound on, Tim. Steve Sodovic, Secretary?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Superintendent. Dr. Elizabeth Hallett.
I'm here, present.
Thank you. School Committee Clerk Logan O'Connor.
Yes.
Thank you. Director of Technology Jennifer Erickson.
Yes.
Thank you. Director of Finance Martin Angela.
Yes.
And thank you. And CPS Principal Michael Horton.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. This open meeting of Nantucket School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting, ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, Nantucket School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom app, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public might join. I'm sorry, that's my God, joining in. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, and welcome. I'd like to, before we go into public comments, I would like to take the moment to welcome Dr. Beth Hallett as her first school committee meeting as our superintendent. Welcome, Beth.
Thank you.
And I'll let you later on during the meeting introduce our new members of faculty, if that's okay. Terrific. Thank you. I will remind everybody, if you could mute your microphone, please, if you are not presenting or speaking. And then please remember to unmute yourself when I either call you for a vote or comments or a presentation. Thank you. And school committee members, if you do not see me call on you, if you have a comment, please either raise your hand so I can see you or send me a quick message in the chat to say that you have a comment. But I'm trying to keep my eye out for you all. Thank you very much. We are open now the comments from the public. I know Jen Erickson is monitoring the public comments. So we'll take a moment to see if there are any comments coming in. No comments yet. Okay, Jen, thank you. We'll give it a little bit more time because I think there is a bit of a lag between YouTube, which is how people can make their comments, is through signing on to YouTube. And the comments come directly into us. Jen, do you mind just refreshing to see if there's any other, any comments at all before I move on? Okay, thank you, Jen. All right, we will move on to presentations and discussions. And I'd like to ask our Director of Finance, Martin Angela, to start the evening off, please, with the gift funds and donations presentation. Welcome, Martin.
Thank you. Good evening. It's one of the presentations that we do every year, and it's extremely humbling. And it's amazing to show the generosity of the community that has been happening the past three years. As you can see, this year, we had a little over $247,000 in gifts and donations. It's over $40,000 more than we received in the prior fiscal year 2019, when we got a little over $206,000. And then in 2018, just for comparison purposes, the total was $193,000. A lot of these gifts and donations help the school in many different ways. One of them being the community school is a huge beneficiary of these gifts and donations. As you will see, some of the biggest donors on this list are the Community Foundation for Nantucket, with 62,500 in total in fiscal year 2020. Remain Nantucket with $54,000, and Egan Maritime Institute with over $42,000. So just those three total, more than half of the total donations. But it's been a year that we've received numerous donations that have helped different areas. For instance, kudos to Logan O'Connor, who has worked very, very hard. And we have received in the Adopt a Launch Tray Program, we have gotten this year $15,050. This is a record for this program. This helps offset costs for families that can, that experience hardship or are in need of some sort of help with the school lunch accounts of the students in Nantucket Public Schools. So all 9,500 of those $15,000 were anonymous. But we nevertheless want to appreciate the generosity of everyone on the island, of the community as a whole. It's been an amazing year, and thank you, thank you all that have contributed to, you know, to anything that we do at the Nantucket Public Schools. It's a huge appreciation. And like I said, it helps immensely with different programming and also in different areas within student life and opportunities. So I can open it for questions at this point. You can ask me about anything in particular from the presentation or from previous years. This is the fourth year we are doing this presentation. So now we have a more, it's become more and more informative as we go. So I always try to highlight some of the major donors and areas.
Thank you very much, Martin. I will start with Jen Eller. Any questions or comments, Jen?
No questions for Martin, but thank you for your presentation. And I have to just echo what you said. We are extremely grateful to our generous community who continues to give support to our students in our district, and we are so grateful. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Jen. Steve Sodovic?
No, just ditto to all of the above. It's pretty amazing when you think about it. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Steve. Tim Lepri?
I think that's a humbling amount of money. Does it include money for the Boosters Club?
For the Boosters Club, no. It does include donations from the Swimming Boosters Club that go for the swim program, but nothing else, no. There is separate 501(c)(3) organization, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, and I'll just echo fellow committee members that I don't know how many communities have the good fortune that we have. And we see it in our meetings regularly when we are voting to accept the gifts. We have an amazing community. And I am very, very grateful. So thank you for this presentation. We appreciate it every year, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite CPS Principal Michael Horton to join now and present the CP schedule that he and his team have been working hard on. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Pauline. I think Jen Erickson is going to present the slides presentation. And I'm going to make comments on each slide. And Jen, if you don't mind, if I just say next or next slide, you just advance and we'll be good. So let's go to Slide 2 to look at the timeline. Due to the challenges that CPS faced at the beginning of last year in September of 2019 with a very complicated schedule, Dr. Beth Hallett, you know, as Deputy Superintendent, moved very quickly to form a CPS Schedule Committee for next year, for 2020 to 2021. So this process is going on eight to nine months at this point. And I have to thank everyone who's been a part of it. There's been a lot of meetings, a lot of time, and a lot of great conversations along the way. A key moment there was February 8th. Chris Pollitt is a principal of the Tingsborough Middle School, and close to a 30-year veteran educator. And this is what he does. He goes around New England working with middle school teams and administrators to come up with a schedule model that works for each school's core values and mission. So that day in February was probably a big turning point in the process. And I'm going to come back to that later when I get towards one of my slides at the end. And just reviewing this presentation before tonight, I realized I forgot a date. And it was March 11th. And you can imagine that anything right around March 13th is pretty much a blur for all of us who went through the closure of schools that weekend. But on March 11th, there was a district half-day. And I actually stepped back, and the committee members that you'll see in the next slide led horizontal, you know, by subject, excuse me, by grade level conversations. Grade 6 team got together across all subjects. Also vertical, you know, so all the math teachers got together, the middle school core teachers got together, all the ELA teachers got together. And they reviewed and as-is roll-forward schedule model, rolling forward a similar schedule model to last year but rotated. And then the new team model, which is where we ended up. We also were able, you know, originally my deadline due date was June 1st to get CPS teachers their schedules. But we met, you know, one of our secondary goals that before teachers left for the summer, they had a pretty good idea of what their schedule would look like for next year. Not all their class rosters of students, but a good idea of what courses and when, and when their planning periods were, when they can take their lunch breaks, things like that. We had meetings probably once a month, you know, initially, but then ramped up, and we were probably meeting four times a month. So that's why the average is around two per month. Okay, next slide, please. So you can see it's a team effort, cross-section of staff. I think there's 15 names there. Yeah, I'm there. For a second, maybe I forgot myself. But great group, and I thank them all very much for their time and effort coming together. Next slide, please. So as we looked at cohorts, you know, pushing 150 students like they currently are in the grade 6 of this past year, that is a lot of names and parents and families for any single teacher to connect with, to form relationships with. And Chris Pollitt from Nelens really pushed us to say, you know, when you get around 110, 115, you start to lose some connection with kids. And that's about the time you start to forget some names, or you incorrectly call one kid by another name, or cross up or confuse students or families. This actually goes back to the research that anyone on the NIS Building Committee reviewed when we were considering an East School and a West School. What is that magic number, you know, for any one person to know well? You know, what's that critical mass before those connections start to go downhill and suffer from having to connect with over 115, 120 names, not to mention the grading and the paperwork? So that was really, you know, the moment that pushed us to really consider a team model. And what we have next year in grade 6 and 7, not grade 8, I'll talk about that in a minute, but in grade 6 and 7 next year is two separate teams. A team of four teachers and a team of two teachers. The team of four is pretty traditional, one teacher for ELA, one teacher for math, one teacher for science, one teacher for social studies. Students rotate through those four subjects. They have two encore blocks, and then they have a flex block. The team of two is the same four subjects. It's just the same teacher teaches math and science. And the same other teacher teaches ELA and social studies. And part of that is also so those smaller groups of teams of teachers can connect with one another and actually play around with the actual lengths of blocks when they need more time for a science lab, or a field trip, or an assembly, or a project that lasts more than 45 or 50 minutes for a typical period. You can see there what this accomplishes is the sections are around 23 to 25 students. But more importantly, you know, any one teacher is not managing a caseload of over 100 kids. The teachers on the team of four have 9 to 100. The trade-off is they're teaching four sections of the same subject. The teachers on the team of two have half that. But remember, they're teaching math and science, so two sections of math and two sections of science, or two sections of English Language Arts and two sections of social studies. That's grade 6 and 7. Next slide, please. So grade 8 remains the same, mostly because the current grade 7 rising to grade 8 is only 126 students. So when you divide that by five, it's still within that target window of 23 to 25 students per section. And as you all know, and Pauline especially through Egan, is we have the luxury and privilege of having an additional science class in grade 8, oceanography. And that is something that is core to our values here in Nantucket as an island, having students familiar with marine science and how the ocean and our climate works on our island. So when you got those five sections, it's an easy, every kid sees each of those sections once. That's five of their seven classes, and then they have the two other encore sections. However, going forward, we're going to have to look at what we can do with teams of teachers because that big group that is going into grade 7, 152, and growing by the day, we're going to have to look at a two-team model for the future. The grade 8 team is aware of this. We have talked about it. And they kind of get a year mental preparation to get to that point. All right, next slide, please. So here's an example. Basically, there are seven blocks for students. They have their ELA, the math, the science, social studies, two encores, and then a flex block. The other things listed there is a 10-minute homeroom, which all students have, grade 6, grade 7, grade 8. And then lunch, which is half an hour middle of the day. What you see here is two encore wellness sections, choices, where students have in grade 6 exploratory, where they have art, Spanish, and computer for one trimester. We're on trimesters at CPS, so for 180 days, for 60 of those days, they have art 60 days in a row. For the next 60 days, they might have Spanish. The next 60 days, they have computer tech. That's one of their two encore sections. Every sixth grader gets that. There's no choice. The other encore block is either half wellness, physical education, so it's every other day, or a music choice. So that's a choice that sixth graders had to make for next year. And as we all might remember, as students move up through the grades, through grade 7, through grade 8 to high school, there's more and more electives, there's more and more choices. So the idea in grade 6 here is everyone gets 60 days of art, 60 days of Spanish, 60 days of computer tech. And if they want to focus and continue with any one of those specific encore subjects, they can in grade 7 and 8. And it gives them a little bit more flexibility. The flex block is one of the most interesting components of this schedule. And it enables students to really get whatever they need. If a student needs more help in math, they can meet with the math teacher and get some extra help for remediation in math. In the past, CPS has had a schedule using what's called X Block, which was kind of extra help after school. Originally, it started out as the time waiting for the buses to come up from NES. And those 10 to 15 minutes, you know, of help. And now it's expanded into 30 minutes from 2:20 to 2:50. Well, X Block is not required. It's suggested. Teachers are available. But with this schedule model, we're able to make it happen during a school day from 1:45 to 2:20 at the end of the day. There's also opportunities for students to get specialized services, whether it's counseling, whether it's speech, whether it's occupational therapy, physical therapy, reading. There could be some enrichment clusters, which you're familiar with, that have been going on at NIS, which has been a dream of Michael Kozart's for many years, to have some extra enrichment opportunities at the middle school. The wellness teachers are already talking about offering a mindfulness. Social emotional learning has gathered more and more momentum in the past few years, especially now with remote learning and the COVID-19 pandemic. So it allows us to do a variety of things for that last half an hour of the school day. That is a key point and advantage of this team schedule model. Next slide, please. So grade 7 really mirrors grade 6. It's pretty much the same. The only difference is the encores are B and E, where if you notice in the last slide, they were A and D. So they're not in a row. They're spread out a little bit on purpose. That's just because, you know, our Spanish teachers or art teachers, wellness teachers, they have to be available for all the different grade levels. They teach across all three grade levels. So we have to stagger the encore times. This enables staff also have the minimum number of teacher preparation planning minutes as well. Everything is still true about flex block there at the end. Next slide, please. So grade 8, you'll still see two encores, C and G. And there was some thought there to put the encores for grade 8 at the end of the day because the sense is that many of our eighth graders are either part of, are more likely to be part of CPS Athletics or some type of JV program, that they would be dismissed early. So they would not be missing an academic. They'd be missing one of their encore elective choices at the end of the day. So there's some thought behind the timing of the encores. Here you'll see the same four subjects, ELA, math, science, and social studies, with the additional oceanography. So that's just five sections, five groups of kids rotate through those five sections. I'm not sure if it's coming up in another slide or not, but this might be a good time to realize, these are just examples. So not every kid will have ELA at 8:00 AM in grade 8, and that wouldn't work. We don't, Chip Davis would have a class of 126 students. So they're rotated through. So students have different classes at different times. And over a five-day week, and this is one of the things we wrestled at probably back in January, is the students actually rotate through. So if they had ELA 8:00 AM on day one, ELA would then be at B Block on day two, so on and so forth. But what we worked out in the math is that every Monday would look the same. Now, the encores would flip-flop a little bit, so it's really a 10-day schedule. But from the teacher and the kid point of view, every Tuesday looks the same. Every Thursday looks the same. It's just where they have their different subjects rotates through. That is something that was a core value to the staff because we all know that the classes at the end of the day, after lunch, when there's a food coma might set in, or some kind of sleepiness might set in, is very different than teaching at the prime time at 9 o'clock in the morning. And then the reverse is true. The kids who are late to school or are, you know, kind of late bloomers in the morning and aren't quite awake yet, they have a chance, then they can shine when their class is rotated towards the end of the day. So this is not reflected in these examples, but just getting a sense that there are some staggering rotations through within each of these examples. I'll answer all questions at the end, if that's okay, because I'm, you know, got good momentum going right now, and I'm halfway through it. I don't want to break it. So next slide, please. So encore choices. I spoke about this earlier. You know, grade 6, there's just a music choice. And then as students move up, there are more choices than ever before. Seventh graders have a choice of band percussion, chorus, and drama, which I should say or drama. Drama is a new course. Lani Cuts is going to be teaching the drama section or two for seventh, eighth graders next year. Art, Spanish, and computer tech, same for grade 8. So there are seven choices for electives. And we ask students to rank their top five. But I can pretty much 99.9% guarantee that they'll get their top three. There's enough spread for how students responded, that it's evenly distributed, that we don't have too many students all selecting drama, or too many students all selecting art. So as we've offered more choices, this class sizes have actually gone down. So that enables more students to get their top choices, which is pretty cool. So if you remember, there's two encore blocks in all these grade levels. Now, grade 6 definitely has those set exploratory art, Spanish, computer tech for one of them. But for 7 and 8, there's two encore blocks, and each of those encore blocks is every other day. So if you look at an encore block, there's So if you look at an encore block, there's, you know, day one, three, and five, and there's days two, four, and six, okay? So they flip-flop back and forth between all these encore choices. So with the two encore blocks, there's actually four slots. Okay, one of those four is PE. All students have to have a minimum amount of PE wellness for Massachusetts. That's a requirement. So they get three of these choices, which is pretty cool. When you start to look at the variety that students have and the, you know, the capabilities of our staff. It's it's a pretty neat schedule that we're offering our students for next year. Now, computer tech, that's the other asterisk. That's the other new course um, for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Next slide, please. So here are all the advantages. I'm not gonna read through all of them. I've touched on them already, in terms of smaller caseloads. Building relationships with students and families, the teams of teachers having more flexibility with the times, and hey, if you're in a team of two. I want to keep these kids for a few more minutes. Do you mind keeping your kids for a few more minutes? That can happen, you know, week in, week out. You can look at projects. There's opportunities for project-based learning initiatives. It's it's really neat side effects of having a team model. The Flex Block I talked about at length, that is really a key component of this model. And it it cannot be um, put aside that a schedule just has to work. In the past, one of the reasons why we started off the year in such a hole is we were having a six-day schedule. But some classes met five out of six days and they dropped a day. So of the six days and it rotated through, that's six different singletons to try to fill in with different things. And then some of our courses met three of six days, and some of our courses met four of six days. And the last time I checked, you can't fit a three with a four in a six-day schedule because that adds to seven. So it it was mind-blowing to how we tried to figure out the schedule to work late last summer into how we began the year in September, which again is why Dr. Howlett said, let's get together, let's figure this out from the start. So in many aspects, this schedule is actually simpler because the puzzle pieces just simply fit together. It's either an everyday course, or it's an every-other-day course. And the minute you have every-other-day courses. And all the other choices are every-other-day choices, they fit together, they mesh together. So it's either these five or six choices, those five or six choices. That helps you with staffing, that helps you with student electives and their choices, and it helps you with room and space use. Already talked about students have encore choices, and you know, at the middle school, we're we're looking to raise human beings. We're we're looking to educate people to be better people. And that is an important aspect of the schedule as well. Next slide, please. Already talked about the rotation. Um, the days of the week look the same. I mentioned that. The encore is how they're spread out, grade eight, end of the day. And then we also, that one time when encores don't happen, actually just worked out to be the middle of the day, which is when we have lunch. Um, anyone who's done a middle school lunch duty knows that some students finish in fifteen, twenty minutes. And the last ten minutes can be tough to keep students kind of subdued and not climbing from the rafters. We've tried recess at Sire Spears Middle School in the past. We can still use the picnic tables when there's nice days, but we all know here in Nantucket, that's really for September and probably June. So in the winter, we now have the ability to have the gymnasium free. Where students, and we're not gonna encourage them to race through to get this, but students who earn this privilege, they can go socialize and walk and talk in the gym. And again, if you've ever done lunch duty, to get twenty or thirty kids out of a room of one hundred and twenty, one hundred and fifty, makes all the difference in the world in terms of crowd control. And, you know, picking up on the little things so they don't turn into bigger things. All right, here we go. The last couple of slides, the negatives. What is not here, Steve Sortavich, what is not here is double math. Um, that is the main casualty of this schedule. Um, as a math teacher, I've thought about this, and it's not just about math, but also what's not here is double ELA. If you think back to grade six and seven, where of seven courses of seven sections, four of them, so more than half. Were already determined before students had any choice whatsoever to have two sections of math every day. And two sections of ELA, one was reading, one was writing every day. There's not much room for anything else. Science was being cut, and and I and I hate to say that. Social studies was the first to go, because students also had specialized reading services, they have special ed services. Um, they may have speech services, um, they have group counseling services, um, wellness is a requirement. It just didn't work. And when we met with Chris Pollitt, so I'm I'm returning back to what I said at the beginning, he challenged us. He kept saying, why do you have this? And it took before lunch and after lunch on that Saturday for us really to get to grips, to answer that we weren't really sure. That he kept saying, this is not what's best for middle school kids. You're trying to do too much with too little. You're trying to squeeze in way too many things into too many different puzzle pieces. No wonder you're all stressed out. So we had to let let go. And we also looked at data. It was an important part of that day. And we honestly couldn't say that the double math was actually improving our math scores. Now, this year, it's tough. We don't have a lot of data. Um, but we didn't have any proof that doubling up on math and separating ELA was actually improving our MCAS scores. Our MCAS scores have been pretty much flat here at CPS the last three years. We've tried different models, as you know, splitting the courses up. Um, so we're willing to let that go. We compensated with the fact that with the Flex Block, that is the time when students can get whatever they need. That is the time where students can get an extra thirty minutes of math. Students are already having specialized small group math sections. Students who need that are getting that. And the group as a whole left that Saturday feeling pretty good. It was one of those kind of epiphany type of moments. And, you know, um, those fifteen voices, you know, they're probably behind me. You you know, they're they're here. I invited them here tonight. Maybe they're watching. Hope they're watching. If not, they can check it out on the recording. Um, but this is not Michael Horton's decision. This is not Michael Horton's or the principal's, you know, schedule. This was a team effort from the beginning, going back to October. Um, that Flex Block is a key thing, and it's something that we want to move forward to, no matter what, which leads me to my last slide. So with the state initial return to school guidance document released last week. I had a hard realization, oh, my God, all this work, we can't even do it. We we have to have kids in pods. We have to have kids stay in classrooms and teachers travel to classrooms. Is there a day on, a day off? Are there half-days? Is it a four-day week? Now, I assure you, we're already working on some of those options. But I have told the staff, and I'll continue to do this, we're gonna do whatever it takes to implement as many of the positive benefits of this schedule as we can this fall, regardless of the format that we return to. Um, it is what is best for kids, is what we need to do. You know, we will wear masks, we will have signage, we will we will look at our groupings, we're looking at using spaces differently. That last bullet is really important, that, you know, if students cannot eat lunch in the cafeteria. We can use the cafeteria for a classroom or two, or a chorus room. If we don't have the library available for large groups, we can use the library for a classroom or two. If the gymnasium in the wellness class is outside or in ventilated air as recommended. Then we could use the gymnasian for a different purpose. So there's new work to be done, but I'm here tonight to tell you how excited I am and the staff is about this schedule. And it's been a complete collaborated collaborative effort. And we're gonna work with Dr. Howlett and the Return to School Committee and Task Force to figure out what we can do for uh, the fall, for September eighth.
Great. Thank you so much, Michael. This is a great presentation. Um, I'll open it up to our school committee. Steve Sortavich, would you like to um, start with questions and comments?
Seeing as how my name was mentioned. Uh, Mike, Michael knew those questions would be coming. Um, Michael, I I really applaud what you've done. My little birdies tell me that they had lots of input. And some of the better parts of this schedule, or these schedules, include, for example, the rotation. We've always been concerned about the late-in-the-day aspects of learning, so I'm glad to see that. From what I've heard so far, the teachers who are going to have to teach two subjects are pretty excited about seeing the same kids twice a day and getting to know them better. So I will accept the expertise that you've been given about math. Uh, till we see how things going. With a bit of luck, we won't have MCAS tests to be concerned about for a couple of years anyway. Till this COVID stuff goes away. I think I read today that there's a pretty substantial portion of the legislature that's now in favor of um, not doing away with it completely, but postponing it. They're suggesting four years. Um, I expect a compromise of two years will serve us all pretty well. So thank you and all of your uh, task force members for what you've done. It's taken us a couple of years, but it looks like something everyone's gonna be able to work with. Thanks again.
Thanks, Steve. Jen, would you like to have comments and questions? Jen, can you hear me?
There we are. Yep. Okay, my connection is a little unstable. But first, I'd like to say thank you very much, Mike, great presentation. Um, and thank you for all the time and dedication for the everybody in the scheduling committee put towards this. It's really refreshing to see this schedule that looks so thoroughly well-thought-out and planned. I'm very excited about this. Thank you. And I just want to make a couple quick mentions. I know discussion about, you know, recess, at least at the sixth grade level, has always been something we've had and thought. So I love the walk and talk opportunity that you're offering for the students. That's amazing, and I think a lot of kids need that, and they won't be hanging out the rafters. They'll instead get their, you know, ya-yas out in the gym. So thank you. And then the computer tech addition um, class is, I think, so important, especially for incoming sixth graders who are handing over, you know, Chromebooks too. So I'm really grateful for this and excited to see how this works out. Hopefully COVID doesn't get too much in the way of all of it. Um, but thank you. It does. It's a great plan, and I'm excited, and thank you and the whole scheduling committee for all your work.
Thank you, Jen. Tim. You're muted, Tim. There you go.
Mike, uh, I think that's an awful lot of work. Now I wonder how it fits in with each of the three models that the Department of Education seems to be floating around.
Yeah, so if we go back in person, um, I have to keep an eye on how many students can I fit in each room, three feet apart. So if I was counting on twenty-six, not everywhere, but in some places, I just can't do it. I just can't do it. So that number is now twenty-two. So there might be some, hey, okay, you gotta move a couple of students from this group to that group to make it so it's it's twenty-two, twenty-three. All the flexibility in there will help with that. Um, the remote on the other end of the spectrum will be pretty much how many classes you have each day, and let's look at a schedule for the week, and is it all six classes every day, or is it three of them? What's an appropriate amount of time online? You know, we saw one class a day and some extra help sessions in the spring. We're gonna have to ramp that up a little bit, is what I've heard from a lot of parents and and other educators. In the middle is the tricky answer. Um, the hybrid model, I'm not exactly sure what that's gonna look like. You know, we're working on the other two first. But the hybrid would present a challenge where if I have that team of two, okay, I've got a structure. Do I have a a team that's the remote team and a team that's in-person team and they flip-flop? Or is it, do we go in person and then the kids are remoting in? Because if you're teaching in person a full day. You also can't be teaching remote at night. That's that's doubling the work. So it's either gonna be shared between two different teams or have to be some type of simultaneous, or two days on, a day off, or something which you've heard different proposals out there. That's a great question, and I I know two-thirds of the answer at this point.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Um, yes, I I concur with everybody's comments here, and and I think this is a tremendous amount of work that your team um, put on. And a couple of comments for me. I I just, first of all, when I looked at this, um, I I was looking at it and reading it that each grade got to actually have wellness as an elective, which I was hoping wasn't right. And then I read it through again and realized, everybody, all grades, still get the wellness, because it's not just the physical education, but it's also the health curriculums that are so important around substance use and good decisions and healthy decisions. So I'm glad that was that. And then I just have a question. You've got sixth grade and seventh grade eating lunch at the same time, so they would have to spill over to the high school, I'm presuming?
Yeah, we we've always done that. Um, I had to work with Jen Saradalis, as she's built the high school schedule and find out when um, are the cafeterias available. Um, you you might know that the high school actually uses our cafeteria for some times of the day. Um, so that that's all factored in, and it it's, it was a puzzle. We we figured it out. Um, what's interesting, though, is if um, students cannot be in large groups in the cafeteria, it's gonna be in classrooms anyways. Um, we stick to the time, you know, how we utilize the gym could could give us some some flexibility. So we have to figure that out. Once we get the definite regulations and 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 Dr. Howlett says, you know what, this is a, you know, a must-do, you know, th- this is a non-negotiable. We have to go with this model for lunch for next year.
Okay, thanks. And then just my final question is, in eighth grade, they don't have that built-in period at the end of the day like the other two grades have. So where would a student needing additional help in math or um, ELA or reading?
That is correct, and I I'm glad that you realize that. So in the future, it's a positive to why we want grade eight to move to a team model as those large cohorts come up. But for next year, it's gonna be more like it was this year, which means kids who need extra help would be encouraged to stay after school for the X Block, which is teachers are available for half an hour, two twenty to two fifty after school. Um, I was actually really impressed, you know, the older the students are here at CPS. The more that that they stay for extra help, you know, which makes sense as they transition to high school. Because, I mean, we all know, you you see students hang out in the hallways, because as students are older, they're also a little more independent with how they can travel and get home. In other words, they don't necessarily have to jump on the bus. The sixth graders are more of our bus riders, if you will. Our eighth graders, they start to drift off, and they don't ride the bus as much as sixth graders. So they actually have a little bit more flexible time at the end of the school day. Um, that's the best answer I can give you right now, other than we're gonna have to just keep working and helping students, you know, give them extra help whenever they they need it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And and again, an amazing amount of work. Dr. Howlett, did you have a comment you wanted to make on this?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Um, I I just wanted to thank uh, Mr. Horton and um, the scheduling team. This has been a monumental effort, um, starting from the schedule uh, that we had at the end of, or at the beginning of last year. And really moving um, with very clear transparency, with a lot of really great discussion about teaching and learning and middle school uh, education, middle-level students. And I just want to say thank you to all of you, um, if you're out there watching um, in the, on the uh, the the committee, the scheduling committee. I know how hard this has been uh, to get to that point, and uh, Mr. Horton is the right person to have put it, um, helped to put it together. So thank you very much. I cross my fingers and toes that we will be able to try this schedule at some point uh, during during next year. We will see, but it is my um, it is my hope. Thank you. We will see, but it is my hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you. Thank you, Michael, again. Moving on to committee discussions and votes to be taken. May I have a motion to approve the donation from Ahold A Plus Rewards, which is the Stop &amp; Shop to Nantucket Elementary School for $2,833.13.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve Sortavich. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. I will now do a roll call for your votes unless there's any discussion. Tim Lepri?
Hi.
Jenella?
Aye.
Steve Sortavich?
Aye.
And Pauline Prochey, aye, thank you. May I have a move approval for donation from the Ahold A Plus Rewards Stop &amp; Shop to Cyrus Pierce Middle School for $1,872.09.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve Sortavich.
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Jen, may I have your vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And Pauline, aye, thank you. Vote to approve the donation for Mr. and Mrs. W. Michael Kozelt to the Nantucket High School Auto Shop for the sum of $200. May I have move approval, please?
So moved.
Jenella, move approval, second by?
Second.
Second by Tim, thank you. Steve, may I have your vote, please?
Aye.
Tim Lepri?
Aye.
And Jenella?
Aye.
And Pauline Prochey, aye, thank you. Last week, we had a legislative member of our school committee, which is Steve Sortavich, who's also our secretary, read the resolutions, and tonight we are going to vote on them. So please, may I have an approval to the mask resolutions? Nantucket School Committee Resolution on Anti-Racism.
Move approval.
Thank you, Tim. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Jen, may I have your vote?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And Pauline, aye. May I have approval, please, to accept the Nantucket School Committee Resolution on the COVID-19 state funding?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Second, Jenella. Tim, may I have your vote?
Aye.
Steve Sortavich?
Aye.
Jenella?
Aye.
Pauline Prochey, aye, thank you. May I have a motion to accept the June 22, 2020 meeting minutes?
Move approval.
Thank you, Tim Lepri, second.
Second.
Jenella, second, thank you. And Steve, may I have your vote?
Aye.
Tim Lepri?
Aye.
Jenella?
Aye.
And Pauline Prochey, aye. May I have a motion to accept the reorganization meeting minutes of June 18, 2020?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Second. Tim, second, thank you. Jen, may I have your vote?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
Thank you, Pauline, aye. Transfers and invoices, may I have a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you, Tim, second.
Second, Jeneller.
Thank you, Jen. Steve, may I have your vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Aye.
Jenella?
Aye.
And Pauline Prochey, aye. Thank you very much. Thank you for bearing with me. I feel like I'm in an auction, kind of. Okay, we'd like to move on to the agenda, please, for our superintendent's report. Welcome, Dr. Hallett.
Thank you very much. If possible, I would like to start with a hiring update. But even before that, I would like to introduce to you our new principals. One, you've already heard from, Mr. Michael Horton, who is the new principal at CPS. We are very excited to have him in the role, and his 20 years of experience here in the district will not go unappreciated as he steps into this new role. So welcome, Mike. We're excited to have you in that position. I also want to introduce Mandy Vassal. Mrs. Mandy Vassal is here with us, and so wave. We're happy to have you. Mandy has started her position in Nantucket High School just July 1st and has rolled up her sleeves already and has jumped right in to all of the work that we are asking her to do with regard to our reopening plans and everything. And she's done a fantastic job already communicating with Nantucket High School staff. And both principals will be presenting at some point their entry plans and will give a little bit of an insight of how their first 90 days will be looking. So I just wanted to congratulate both of them, and we are thrilled to have you as part of the team. So in looking at some of the other hiring that is happening in the district, I just want to say I am really thrilled to report that we are doing very well in filling our positions for next year. We have a few teacher positions at each school, really one or two in some cases, perhaps even none. I believe the high school may be complete that we're trying to fill. Our computer tech position at the middle school has been a little bit more difficult to fill. We have our elementary ESL position that has also been a little bit more challenging to fill. And, you know, overall, we have been very lucky and we found some excellent people that we're going to be using to or inviting to be part of our teams at each of the schools. We'll be working on hiring our teaching assistants a little bit later on in the summer. We really need to have a clearer idea of how our models, our educational models, are going to look. And again, I'm going to be presenting on that in a few minutes. So we appreciate people's patience as we help ourselves to get organized with that. But we will be looking at our teaching assistants a little bit later on in August. In addition, I am very happy to report that we have two new curriculum directors, one for humanities, Dr. Jennifer Rabold, and one for STEM, and that's Dr. Mandy Bardsley. I do hope to have both of them with us at our next school committee meeting in August so that I can appropriately introduce them to you. But I'm excited to have two folks who are going to be working with me in central office and all across the district to really move our curriculum and instruction forward. And I will tell you that right now, they are coming in at a difficult time, but I am so excited and really thrilled that they'll be rolling up their sleeves as well and getting into the work. So that is hiring. And then I'm happy to move on to my presentation. So I think Jen Erickson will be with, yep, here we go. So I want to start, this is actually a Department of Education presentation. So I am sharing the exact presentation that superintendents across the state received June 26. And I want to just explain that this PowerPoint is not one that I created. I am very simply sharing with you what the presentation was to superintendents. I believe that it gives an overall look at the DZ Preliminary Guidance on Reopening Schools in the Fall, and I wanted to share this with you so that you could understand a little bit. The guidance document that was released on June 25 is about 28 pages, and there is a lot of dense information. So this gives an overall look at where we're headed and where the state is considering going. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew a little bit more about these points in the guidance document. We've been told numerous times throughout our meetings with the commissioner as superintendents that this document is preliminary, meaning there is a very good chance that it could change. We are being asked to be patient, to be flexible, and, in the commissioner's words, to be nimble as we use this guidance to begin that initial planning for September. Next slide, please. So the Department of Education has included multiple groups of stakeholders as they put together this preliminary guidance document. Members of the medical community have been consulted. Dr. Sandra Nelson and Dr. Lloyd Fisher were both present during the presentation of this document and this PowerPoint. And so we had the opportunity to actually ask specific questions to them. And that was very helpful to have two experts right in the field, one on infectious diseases and the other in pediatrics. So that was very helpful to have those two doctors to be able to ask specific questions to. There was also a 45-member return-to-school working group that had representation from students and parents, teachers and administrators, as well as officials and leaders from the educational nonprofits. So having that working group coming together to assist with this document is really important to hear all those voices. And then, of course, others at the table included superintendents, school administrators, public health experts, and of course, teachers' unions. So again, a lot of people came in to weigh in with the document. Next slide. So this is just basically a layout of the guidance document. As you read through it, and I did not, I hope that you have seen it or had a chance to review it, the setup basically is looking at goals for the fall return to school, health and safety requirements, the reopening plans, upcoming comprehensive DZ guidance. And there are also a series of appendices that go into specifics on some of the latest medical literature on childhood susceptibility of COVID-19 facilities and guidance on operations, and then also initial fall special education guidance. So that's how the document is presented. And when you take a look, you'll be able to see that. Next slide. So as you may have heard, the Department of Education is requesting that all districts prioritize planning for a return to in-person instruction in our schools in order to address the whole student and to really maximize learning as best as possible. This guidance is intended to give that initial assistance in planning for in-person learning. It clearly focuses on health and safety requirements. That's very important for us to keep in mind as we are planning. It looks at all three of these possible learning models. You've heard about it today and probably in my previous presentations, as well as Mr. Horton's presentation. We're looking at remote learning as a possibility, which is what we have been doing since March. A hybrid model, which means some students are in-person in our buildings and some are learning remotely. It is the most confusing of the models, and we're working on understanding it well. And then we're also looking at in-person instruction in schools. We are expecting more guidance this month to help in preparing us for the fall. And so we are always looking for that and hoping that we will have more answers as we move forward. Next slide, please. So as you can see in this slide, excuse me, you can see, as you can see, the Department of Education claims to have created their preliminary guidance under the philosophy that they have to balance the risks of COVID-19 with the risks of keeping students out of school. The primary goal is a safe return of as many students as possible to this in-person instruction, which will really allow us to meet the needs of the whole child in the most appropriate environment. We know that remote learning is not ideal for everyone. So this is really important. We do need to consider the whole child and the importance of being able to see our students in person. Again, the Department of Ed reviewed extensive medical literature. They are continuing to reference in Appendix A in the document, you will see a lot of studies that are being presented in that part of the document. They go on to say that they have been very thoughtful about balancing the risks on both sides with regard to health, safety, socioeconomic and achievement risks as we continue to keep children out of school. So we need to consider all of those pieces. And finally, they do reinforce the fact that this will only be successful if there is a combination of strategies for mitigation. This would include some things that we'll see in the next slide. But just to give you an example, face coverings, wearing masks, washing hands, sanitizing regularly, social distancing, keeping distances between desks and limiting movement through the buildings. All of this will help in reducing the risk of transmission of the virus, and we'll see that in the next slide. So as I mentioned, here are the critical strategies for keeping our students and our educators safe in a return-to-school in-person model. Wearing face masks or face coverings is essential. That allows for 80% effectiveness in reducing transmission of the virus. So that's very important. Physical distancing, we are being asked to aim for six feet of distancing if possible, which is a CDC guideline, but a minimum of three feet is appropriate if we are able to combine with other safety measures. And this is the World Health Organization. And many of our European and Asian countries are following that rule. The washing hands, we need to wash our hands regularly, hand sanitize. That's crucial, and it will need to be built into our classroom and school routines. So we're considering how we can teach children, make sure adults are following the same protocols and how that becomes a regular part of our beginning of the day and different points during the day routines. Both children and educators must stay home when they are sick or have been in any close contact with anyone who has been diagnosed with the coronavirus, and that is essential. So we'll be making sure that students will be staying home if they're not feeling well. Next slide, please. So in this slide, the Department of Education has shared that the medical literature suggests that children are not as susceptible as adults in the transmission of COVID-19. Schools are not those great contributors to the spread of the virus as once believed or super-spreaders, so to speak. Children are not super-spreaders. It looks like only around 4% of cases in a couple of studies happened where they were actually school transmissions. So that is encouraging data. In looking at studies from six different countries, COVID-19 infection rates are lower with children under the age of 20 than in adults. Their half is susceptible. If exposed, children are much less likely to become infected, and children are less likely to infect others. They cite a study in Switzerland where only 8% of households that had coronavirus, it was a child that was the person transmitting the disease. Instead, 80% of transmission comes from an adult family member. So again, medical literature is becoming more and more emergent with more understanding of the virus. It is still a moving target. We are still constantly looking, as I'm sure all of our professionals are in the healthcare industry and also in the Department of Education. Clearly, it's extremely important that we are safe, that we have the safest way to bring students back. Next slide, please. So here is an example of the reopening plans. On the far left, you will see return without restrictions. This is what will happen when we have a vaccine, when the coronavirus has been extinguished. We are not sure that we will get to this point at any time next year, but there's always a chance to hope. The other plans, as you see from left to right, number one is in-person learning with new safety requirements, and that is the priority that the Department of Education is asking us to plan for. The goal is to get as many students as we can safely back into schools while following all of the safety requirements and mitigating strategies. The second one is hybrid learning, and that is where some students will be in school and some will be doing remote learning from home. This is for districts and schools who can't bring in all of their students based on the space in the building, class sizes, or COVID issues that are happening within the community. So we are assuming that we will need to be looking carefully at hybrid learning also because if there are any chances that we have to return to a limited instructional model, that's probably the one that we would move from right away, from full in-person. Also available for students who cannot return to school is going to be remote learning. We must be able to provide viable instruction, which is equal to and just as rigorous as in-person learning for students who are unable to come back to school because of health issues, or if districts have to close based on health trends. If COVID-19 returns with a strong vengeance and we need to close schools, we will be able to do that using a remote learning plan. I feel that having gone through it once, we will have a stronger and better way to be able to present remote learning. So and my hope is that we won't get to that point where we all have to go back to remote learning, but hopefully we will be much more prepared in the future with that. We have to consider our special populations. We have to account for and prepare for those compensatory services for special We have to consider our special populations. We have to account for and prepare for those compensatory services for special education and for English learners. And that is important that we always continue to, to make sure that we're, we are doing what we are asked to do from the federal government. Thank you. Next slide, please. So sometime in August, all districts will have to submit a comprehensive plan. We don't have a specific due date just yet. And this plan must include all three different models. In-person instruction, all students back in the classroom. Hybrid models where some students are in school and others are learning remotely, 100% remote learning. So these are the three models that we have to have specifics on. The Department of Education has, has promised us some more guidance on how they would like the reports to happen. We are hoping for a template so that we know exactly what we need to provide to them. And certainly more guidance is on the way. Next slide, please. So here you will see all of the different comprehensive guidance documents that they are providing for us. Obviously, more guidance is coming out in July. July is, has started. It is a longer month. We hope to get the guidance closer to the earlier part of July than the later part of July, but we understand that it is a moving target, building the plane while flying it. And we are trying very hard to, to keep in mind that there, there again could be a shift based on health trends. So that's very important. But you'll see health and safety requirements, we're looking at carefully in each of these boxes. I won't read each of them, but you can see reopening plans. They're asking for, for prerequisites for in-person learn, reopening, we have to consider transportation and busing and how that's going to look. We're working closely with the Cape Guard Collaborative to understand what the implications of reducing our, our, our number of students on buses. Obviously, we need to, and we're hoping to get more guidance from the Department of Education about remote learning resources. They have offered us and promised us additional resources on remote learning. Special education programs and different populations always have to be in our minds and we have to make sure that we're following the guidelines for that. And of course, athletics, extracurriculars and electives. We have to consider how we can still incorporate these important programs into our educational models. So the next question is really, what does that mean for Nantucket? And what that means is we have a lot of work to do. So we are still in the preliminary stages of planning. I will explain a little bit of the work that we have been doing with our task force committees. We have reorganized our task force committees, which I have reported on over the last several school committee meetings. But we've reorganized them to fit the exact recommendations of the Department of Education guidance. And I will explain to them, I'm sorry, I have to toggle to be able to explain a little bit more about these committees. We have a series of about 10 different committees and we have over 50 educators who are involved. Administrators, building supervisors, folks who are, you know, coming in and giving their time to be part of the, the discussion. We have an expectations and logistics committee, which is made up of our principals and these are the, basically, we, this group is looking very carefully at how we are building guidelines. We're working closely with NTA and looking at how we can appropriately and safely have, have school reopen in some capacity. And that's, so that's kind of the, the principles and this is how each building is starting to put their own plan in place and work together. We have a teaching and learning subcommittee for pre-K to five. This committee is reviewing and addressing all different issues around essential curriculum standards. The committee is made up of a large group of teachers and, and this is great to have the, their inputs, really important. Social emotional learning comes right into that. We're making sure that there's equity and access as well and some prioritization of, of professional development needs upon each type of reentry model. We have the same committee for grade six through 12. And the, the number one task for these two committees right now is to try and think about scheduling. We need to look at how that would look for in-person, how that would look for a hybrid model and then how that would look with remote and how we need to bolster and improve our remote, remote learning model. We have other, other subcommittees, facilities is a very important subcommittee. They've been working very hard in measuring classrooms, setting up with appropriate spacing, striving for six feet, but understanding that we, we could, could do a little bit less if we are sure to be using all of those mitigating strategies with face coverage, face coverings and washing hands and spacing out. Looking at removing additional furniture that's not necessary in the rooms, assistance with signage for travel throughout the building, cleaning and sanitizing protocols and how that is going to come into play every day. That they have a lot of work on their, on their plates. We have a technology team. They're working on prioritizing technology and infrastructure, looking carefully at those three models and thinking about what, what hardware we need. Do we need document cameras? Do we need some sort of live feed laptops and other devices for teachers? And how to, how to do, to make sure everyone has what they need, security platforms, educational technology. There's a lot. So, so Jen Erickson has her, has her hands full along with the other folks on this committee. Health and safety committee is made up of our, of our, our nurses. We are thrilled to have them working together, creating health and safety protocols for each school. They will probably be taking part in some of the training that we will be, need to be doing at the beginning of the school year to, to prepare for everyone coming back. They are going to, and they, and they continue to have regular contact with the hospital, with the town of Nantucket, Department of Public Health. So we know that we're in good hands as they help to prepare those protocols for each school. Our front office operations team is looking carefully at how we move through the building and what those front office operations might need with regard to opening up schools, considering entry and exit protocols, dismissal, entry, travel and movement through the building, things about communication also with staff, with parents. So we, we are, they are essential to this and we are so thrilled to have our, our ESPs working with us on that. Communications committee is looking at how we are communicating as a district, how we are communicating as schools about reopening plans. We have put in place now that the superintendent, that I myself will be sending a message every Monday out to parents and out to the community so that people are aware and we're updating regularly and keeping that process clear to everybody so that they have an opportunity to ask questions. I am thrilled to announce that from my message from yesterday, I have had several parents who have reached out with questions, several of them also from our Hispanic community and I have answered them and they've been very pleased to have been able to be part of that process. Our transportation committee, how, how are we going to be busing our students? How are we going to be moving our students with buses? That is important. We're going to need to work with the collaborative on that. Food services committee, how are we going to be serving food? It is an understanding that we will not be able to amass students in cafeterias. So most likely we will need to be serving food in classrooms. This means that it will, there'll be some, some, some training that needs to happen. There will be protocols that need to be put in place so we understand clearly how we can assure that students are getting lunch and, and breakfast as well. So there's, there's a lot to do with food preparation as well. We're glad to have Linda Peterson on this team as well as a few other folks who have been heavily involved with, with food services anyway. And then finally, our athletics committee, we are working with Mr. Maury and Mr. Lombardi and others to, to consider and try to prioritize how we can get athletics back into our school programs. Obviously, this, this means collaboration with MIAA, with the town of Nantucket. There are some things already starting to happen. We're going to see some summer conditioning programs happening that we've been approved to, to, to do with, with some of our sports. Obviously, there'll be a lot of training that needs to occur for how we can have safely, how we can safely hold athletics at our schools and clearly messaging to parents in the community about updates. So there's a lot that's on our plates. We are working to, to meet once a week in committees and then each committee has a facilitator that will report to the expectations committee and we will, our next steps basically are to start pulling together all of the information into a blueprint. Some other pieces that are really important, I mentioned the measuring of classrooms and setups. We've been using a model, a, an audit tool that actually puts in the dimensions of a classroom, the dimensions of desks and it helps us to understand how many. So it's not that we're asking our facilities teams to set up every single classroom. I know that some principals have already set this in motion, working with their building supervisors to see what this is going to look like. And I will say that we have some very spacious spots in our schools and that's something that feels good. We still have work to do to determine where we're going to need to make some changes and use non-traditional spaces like libraries, the cafeteria, gyms. We hope that, that we can, we can, we can still safely bring everybody back. And we are considering all of the things that are necessary to do that, making sure we have all of the PPE scheduling, as I mentioned. Obviously, it's important also to make sure we have parent and teacher feedback. So we will be having additional meetings of our school councils over the summer to incorporate parent feedback and parent input. And we'll be sending out surveys to parents and teachers so that we can get some very preliminary information about how they feel about returning to school. And that's really the whole focus of that, of that survey. And they'll be going out tomorrow. Both surveys are prepared and ready to go. So that's a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions on the presentation or on the task force committees. And, and that's all.
Thank you, Beth. Take a, take a break. Tim, let me move to you first for comments and questions. Oh, you were already muted. I mean, you weren't muted, so go back and unmute yourself, please. Thank you.
I think it's exciting times. I think that very much like Mr. Horton, there are a number of variables that are in play, but we're approaching it in a rational way. We'll just see how it plays out. I mean, a lot of it is out of our control. Can set up the best plans and then you meet the enemy and they go by the boards, but we have to look at this.
I thank you. I have to say that I am, I'm so thankful to have the support of so many people. So many, so many educators, staff members have jumped right in and wanted to be part of the discussion, part of the planning. And I think that's just a testament to the, the community spirit here in Nantucket and the true dedication that our, our staff and educators have for the district, so.
It is remarkable. You sound like you have a whole army of people helping, so that's great. Jen, may I go to you next, please?
Thank you, Beth, for that presentation. That was a lot. I want to rewind for a minute back to the hiring update if I can. I had a question. We're so lucky that Michelle is still hanging on with us, but have we had any applicants for the Director of Special Services at this point?
Thank you very much for bringing that up. I realized that I had forgotten to update you on that. So we do have some candidates. We will be reaching out to them to set up interviews, hopefully the earliest next week. We hope that we can find someone as talented as Michelle and certainly I will keep the school committee abreast of, of the process.
So I'm confused because in the past, the school committee has always done the interviewing and the hiring of the Director of Special Services. Has that changed?
I have, I am happy to include the school committee as part of the interview process. I was under the impression, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that it's a recommendation, that recommendations are brought to the school committee. It looks like Logan might have the information on that.
Logan?
Typically, the candidates are vetted first and then some serious and honest possibilities are brought to the school committee and then you take part in that. But it would be a waste of time to bring five potential people to you.
Right. So last time we only had two candidates, so I guess that's why we were in from the beginning interviewing them both. So, okay, just to clarify, thank you so much. And yeah, I don't envy you with everything coming your way for the start of the school year. I'm really anxious to hear the response from our teachers and staff and hopeful that, you know, I, I think it's really important to see what their comfort level is because as we know, maybe our, our students aren't as susceptible, but they are, you know? And so I just want to make sure that our staff, our bus drivers, everybody involved feels comfortable and safe. And, you know, really, we don't know what long-term effects are, even in the kids. So I just, I appreciate everything you're doing and this, it's challenging, but thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Steve?
I want to start by applauding everything you're doing, Beth, because I've, I'm discomforted by some of it. The hiring of the two curriculum directors, I mean, not only is it my understanding, because I've never been part of it, that the school committee was involved in those interviews, I believe we have to approve. So whether these people are hired yet or not, I don't, I guess I'm confused. Any directorships, I thought, had to be approved by the school committee.
I, I don't believe that that is the case. I think that the special education director is the one approval as well as the superintendent that the school committee is required to approve.
I, I'll look into it further. I mean, I'm happy that you have them because they're certainly going to be needed. But the process and protocols are, are what concern me. There are two or three things that the Commissioner of Education mentioned that you didn't and I'm not criticizing you because 28 pages worth of his comments would be too much. One of those comments was that the trajectory of the virus and the finances are both currently completely unknown. And I want to come back to the finances in a minute. Another thing he recommended was that the school committee be involved in the process. And I haven't heard you say that you've got any school committee members on any of these committees or the overall task force, et cetera. And I think we need to be involved. The communication aspect of all of this is critical as we approach eventually a final decision on whether we're going to try to go with the full student body or a hybrid model. I would interject here, the first town that I've seen to actually come up with their full plan is Lexington. And they concluded that three feet of distance is not safe enough and they're going with a hybrid model. I've also read a lot lately of new pushback against these pediatric pronouncements that we can put all of these kids back in school together. And I'm also getting pushback from staff who are fearful of being in schools that are that crowded. Now, I'll acknowledge there's no final decision yet and the commissioner himself has said it could be 180 degrees different when he comes out with it in late July or whenever we actually see it. But I'll put right out on the table now, I'm not comfortable with three feet. I'm not comfortable with anything, nor have I talked with any staff members who are. But a hybrid model, and I know we need to get kids back in school. Lexington is going with AB. So the kids essentially So the kids essentially are coming in, I think it's two or two and a half days a week. I didn't memorize it yet, but I have copies for anybody who wants it. And they've already done like four parent surveys and been out to their community and, and this is the decision they've made that, and, and I believe, and I've read it a couple of times, the commissioner has said that essentially it's our choice based on how safe we think our schools should be, whether we go with a full or a hybrid model. So I, I recognize that time hasn't come yet.
Steve, I'm just gonna interject for a minute, and if I may, Beth, that I'm not sure all of this is accurate. So what I'd like to do is actually get in touch with our mask rep and just make sure, I know you know the regulations, but I think for the school committee, if I can on your behalf, be in touch with Jim Hardy and just clarify some of this because I think that there's a lot of information out that sometimes people are writing their own opinions or some of it's coming out of DESI. And, and I think it's important that we as a committee have clarity and, and we understand. I know you have the rules and regulations, but I think it's good for us to have them. So if that's okay with the school committee, I will reach out and, and get that not only on the opening, but I will get clarification, Steve, on the responsibilities. I believe it's the superintendent and the special education director that is our purview. I don't believe that any other positions are. I think that's for the superintendent. And the superintendent would bring it to us for information, but it's not something we would vote on. But again,
I, I don't, Madam Chairman, have a huge problem with it. I just, I'm concerned about communication. I'm concerned about following protocols and the school committee in some form or fashion being more involved than just getting reports every couple of weeks about how things are going. I have a final general area of questioning, and that is, how are we doing? What is your thinking? And, and I hope Martin is still here somewhere. Yep, there he is. What is your thinking on the finances? The commissioner talked about level services plus budgeting. In other words, coming up with more money. And he did not know, or he was unsure that the federal grants you hear about and the state money you hear about are going to happen. So I'm wondering where we're at financially with all of this. And are we going to be talking to the town about getting additional funding if we need it?
Through, through the chair, if I can, they answer this question. We have applied and we are awaiting the confirmation of the CARES Act funding, which is a little over $109,000. So that is one part of funding that we've already applied for. And we are very hopeful we, we should be getting for this upcoming year. We, we are sharing it with the two, the two private schools. We're, we're required to as, as part of the stipulations that were put for this grant. And so the net amount that's going to come to Nantucket Public Schools will be $95,000. A little over. Of this money, we, we are going to be using probably more than half, about 50,000 for whether it's PPE or any kind of sanitizing supplies that we need. And the other part will be for technology equipment. To your question, there is an additional funding that is lately being made available that could amount to somewhat close to $370,000. Now, I don't want to get married to this number. This is very preliminary. We will be going through an application process for this and it is based on, on an amount of money that is given per student. So it's $225 per student. And if we are found eligible and, and the funding is still there, I don't know what the prior, priority will be for different districts. So I cannot, like, like I said, this is very preliminary. We're awaiting word from DESI about how this is going to work out and what the application process will be. I think it's going to be similar to the CARES Act money, but we don't know yet. In addition to that, I have spoken with the Finance Director of the Town, Brian Turbit, and there is funding available for COVID-related expenses. I have reached out to him with certain things that maybe the town can help us cover, such as laptops for teachers or any kind of technology equipment needed should we go to a hybrid or remote learning model. So we, we, there are preparations for those. So these are the external sources of money, plus we have our budget. We have done, worked very closely with, with Facilities Director, Diana O'Neil, and, and the Technology Director, Jen Erickson. They've both done an amazing job planning for this. So we have used some end of year funds that were left available at the end of FY '20 to prepare for what's to come next year. So I think we are in a solid financial position as of this moment, obviously not knowing how the fall will play out and what the conditions will be then. But I feel confident that we'll be, we'll be fine finance-wise.
If I may, that's, you're doing your homework. And that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Martin. Beth, I have just a couple of comments and, and I had written down the notes here that I think the planning for going back to school, it's one of those where everybody's got an idea. They think their plan is the best. And they probably are either wanting to call you or email you or, or get their ideas heard. So if there are people who did not join your massive task force, but they would like to make comments or say, I've got this great idea about this, or this is what this school is doing, how, how best would you like that communication sent to you?
So I am more than happy to have people email me if they have any ideas. I, we will be, as I said, I'm sending out a weekly message to all parents and making it clear that they can always reach out with, with ideas, with questions. Our schools are going to be opening up some parent office hours. I know this has happened at the middle school and we will be having some school council meetings. So my, my thought also is that, that, that principals will also be setting up bi-weekly opportunities for staff to ask questions so that they can also have, those that may not be involved in the task forces could, could either weigh in or ask questions or, or, or give their concerns. You know, I want to make sure that this is a transparent process. It is challenging and it is unwieldy. But it is important to hear what people need or people want to, 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 to know. It's helpful for us in our, in our planning. It's really crucial. And, and our, our surveys going out to teachers and parents is going to help as we begin the next step. If we know how many teachers are unable to come back due to health concerns, or how many parents are not going to send their children back, all of that is going to help us in how we begin the next step in planning what it's going to look like. So there's a lot of, of moving parts and sometimes one part must start before another can start. But I, I don't want to neglect anybody's, the opportunity for anybody to, to share and be part of this. And I can certainly speak with the chair going forward of how we can involve school committee in some of these, in some of our work.
That would be great. Yes, we can discuss whether that's in form of reports or whether we can join conversations in different subcommittees that you have. That would be great. And I would imagine too that we are going to probably need to focus on social emotional needs for our students coming back because I think it's going to be very, if we do go back for a full program, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of fear and concerns, not only with the kids, but also with the families. So I'm sure you're working on that and have got a plan for it, but just.
We do. We have a, a subcommittee of our teaching and learning that is focusing entirely on social and emotional learning for adults and for children, of course, but the adults also have to be confident and comfortable. And, and we want to make sure that we consider all of everyone's needs as we go forward.
Right. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may just confirm or clarify something you said. When you contact mask, are you going to be asking who makes the final decision about what format we choose to open our schools, whether it be full or hybrid or remote? I mean, is that a school committee decision?
I don't believe it is. I believe it's going to be a DESI decision. But I'm happy to have that conversation so I can get that information from them.
Well, good, because the way I'm reading DESI so far, it's, it's going to be left to us or, or left to the local level. Let me put it that way. And that's the way Lexington treated it. And that's, I guess that's the part I want clarified.
Absolutely. What I would ask the school committee members for is if they could email me individually any questions that you would like me to forward on to mask. And if you could do that, today is Tuesday, if I could have your questions by no later than Thursday morning, that would be helpful for me to then put them all together rather than keep going back and forth with different questions. Okay? Thanks, everybody.
If I may, through the chair, very briefly, I want to mention one thing. Mr. Sortavich mentioned Lexington as putting out a blueprint. They created their blueprint prior to the most recent guidance. Most of the work had been done prior to the, the guidance. And as I, as I understand, it may be the, one of the only districts that has presented or offered a preliminary plan. I think that there are many other districts. It is, it is challenging to take one district that is, that is not necessarily a similar fit and use a plan. But I think modeling is important and reading and understanding what others have done has been essential. I'm curious and waiting to see what else we are going to see coming out. And obviously, the Department of Education will be right in, 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 in time with that as well. So I just wanted to mention that to, to, to answer one of Mr. Sortavich's questions.
Well, and please don't infer that I'm suggesting that we're running behind because we're not. It's just theirs came out and it was forwarded to me and the detail and the decisions were of interest.
Thank you. Okay, so we, we will get clarification around this, but again, thank you so much for all of this amazing work because it is so detailed and, and I know that we all realize it can change on a dime. Thank you, and I appreciate everyone who's working on your task force. I'd like to move to the subcommittee work groups and see if any of the committee members have reports. I'll start with Tim. Do you have any comments or reports, Tim? You, you are muted. Thumbs down. Okay, I think that's a universal no, thank you. Steve, do you have any comments, subcommittee reports?
Well, as I guess I'm now involved in communications, I think our policy committee has to start looking at new sexual harassment policies. I was reading today, I think, that the feds are still pressing and although extensions are being requested at various levels, none have been granted yet. So policy subcommittee is Pauline, is that still you and Zona?
No, it is Zona and Jen.
Then unfortunately, I think they're going to have to get looking at that.
Yes, we were all, we were all sent the same document, I believe, and I think you will be given direction on that, Jen and Zona. But thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, and thank you, Logan, for sending that.
Okay, moving on, I noticed, Beth, we had committee and task force assignments under your report. Would you like to address that?
I actually did. I just moved it closer to the other agenda item earlier in order to have them connected.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Where are you, Jen? Do you have any reports for subcommittee?
No reports. I just was going to comment on how policy needs to meet and I'm sure we'll be doing that shortly.
Great. Thank you. And I don't have any on mine. We do not have a student council representative yet. Looking at the agenda for the next meeting. Beth, would you like to walk us through what we've got lined up?
Yes, let me talk, excuse me, let me toggle to the agenda. My apologies. I, I think we will be, we will most likely not be hearing from our LPAC. Currently, our LPAC is involved in summer, summer work and so they are unavailable. We hope to be moving that to the fall. I think we will certainly be looking at, at hiring and giving reports on, on, on that. Obviously, we need to start looking at our school handbooks, considering our school service financial reports. I will be happy to share with you the Student Opportunity Act Plan. It is a very small amount of money, but I will be happy to share with you how Nantucket will be planning to use it. Currently, it is, can, it, it kind of is being pushed off in the face of COVID-19 and in the face of planning and reopening. So it is something that we may not have to present yet with regard to the due, the due date, which is currently at the end of August. We ask for updates as to when this is actually going to be required to, to be submitted, but I'm more than happy to share that. Certainly, we'll have a fourth quarter budget update and I'm happy to entertain other ideas from the chair.
Great. Thank you. To the school committee members, are there any other comments that you would like to see for, or subjects you'd like to see on next? Steve, thank you for raising your hand.
Always a pleasure. I'm not, I don't believe we should be waiting till August 4th to meet again. I know we're planning to try to have our retreat, but there is so much going on and there are so many decisions that are going to need to be made that I think we need to break with tradition and have a second July meeting.
Okay. Would you be proposing around the 21st of July? And just, and I'll get the input from Tim and Jen.
Well, the Tuesdays are traditional, but weren't we looking at that for the retreat as well?
Yes, but I think we might be able to, we might be able to just use that as a, as a full meeting if the other committee members agree. We'll have the student handbooks also available in the month of, so for July, so we could perhaps put that on if we decide to have a second meeting. Tim, would you support a second meeting in July?
Well, it depends what we're going to talk about. I mean, and there is a, this is sort of amorphous that Beth has brought forth, and I don't know that we're going to be in positions to really get involved or make decisions about it. But I love meetings.
Oh, you're a funny man.
If I may, through the chair. Due to the amount of planning and the amount of focus on our reentry and reopening of schools, it, it, there are certain items that we may have a little more of a challenge looking at, such as our handbooks. We certainly can, I can ask our principals to be working on them and updating as we go forward. And, and that is something we could potentially look at for a school committee meeting in the near future. But I would like to reserve the opportunity to, to continue to update you on our planning and our, and, and as we move forward with our, with our reentry, that that be a good portion of what we can offer in, in school committee, along with, again, other items that I mentioned.
Madam Chair, for me, that's exactly what I'm looking for. More than handbooks and so forth is the safety, security, health, planning updates.
Excuse me for one second, Steve. I think before, I don't know that we can even. Excuse me for one second, Steve. I think before, I don't know that we can even continue this conversation with an additional meeting in June, because the town of Nantucket has to reserve dates with the Zoom meetings. And I am being notified that there are no available dates in July to accommodate another meeting. So I think that kind of puts that one to bed. So I, what I would ask for is to ask Beth if she could send us updates. I will ask Logan if you could look to see if we do decide that we would really feel it is necessary to have a meeting. I would ask if you could get in touch with town and see if there's any wiggle room or flexibility in that, if you would, please. And of course, we have to make sure that we have it posted appropriately. But I agree with Tim. I think if we're going to have another meeting, that we need to have a reason and a solid agenda. Jen, would you like to weigh in on your thoughts, please?
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I'm also, I'm concerned about the retreat, if we're going to do that remotely, because that needs to be open to the public as well. Public are invited to the retreat. So if we aren't able to make it public, I'm not sure how we're going to meet, even in a retreat.
Right. I'm actually in the process of looking at that and seeing if that's something that we can do or not. And it may be that we are resigned to our, our public forums, such as meetings like this.
Yeah, another good question for Jim Hardy.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so at this moment, we'll, we'll leave this possibility of a second meeting until Logan and I have done our background work. And then we will let you know. But in the meantime, Beth, if you could, if there are updates or changes, if you could let us know as a group, that would be great, just so that we're sort of on par with your committees, knowing where you are with the work, or any changes that might come in.
Of course.
Thank you so much. All right, any other comments or thoughts before we adjourn? Okay, may I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve Sortavich. May I have a second?
I can, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Tim, may I have your vote, please?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Jen. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, and Steve?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and Pauline Proch, aye. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being with us this evening, and we'll see you again. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.